Our family and friends are a big part of who we are. They are biggest supporters and confidence and a source of belly full of laughter.
And when it comes to keeping you connected, Western Union is here to make it safer and easier with their digital services. Now your family and friends overseas can send you money without leaving home by using the Western Union app or westernunion.com. Just visit gkmsonline.com to register and share your banking details with your sender to start receiving funds directly to your bank account. So you don't have to leave home to collect. Grace Kennedy Money Services, home of Bill Express, FX Trader and Western Union, doing our part to help you stay safe and connected to the ones you love.
Well, what's your name?
Hi, everyone. Welcome and thank you so much for joining us tonight as we discuss the future job industry as part of JD10's Technology and Entrepreneurship Task Force. We're joined today by three panelists and we'll get started with a couple of introductions. During this time, you'll have the opportunity to ask as many questions as you need to. We will be more than happy to answer them. Please share it in the question and answer box and we will answer as possible. Our first panelist is Kadia Francis. Kadia, will you please introduce yourself?
Hi guys, my name is Kadia Francis. I am a, well, I'm a busybody in the digital space locally. I do a podcast, the Digital Jamaica Podcast. I run a blog, the Digital Jamaica Blog. In fact, I created the Digital Jamaica platform with these different elements for the basic purposes of informing Jamaicans about the digital space as well as educating and promoting digital and tech Jamaicans in the local space as well.
Thank you. And we'll go to our next panelist, Camer Ricketts.
How are you doing, everybody? My name is Camer Ricketts and first and foremost, I am a computational biologist. So I study cancer genomics here in New York City, but I'm originally from Montego Bay. And I'm also the founder of Minds of Initiative and what we are a mentorship platform for aspiring students and young professionals where we provide the means to connect students to those who have walked the path before. And then we launched Minds of Jamaica, which is our Jamaican host platform for mentorship.
Thank you. So we also have with us a third panelist, Melanie. Unfortunately, Melanie could not be here with us live. So what we have instead, Melanie has pre-recorded her portion, her segment, talking about the future of work. So please still share any questions, come back to us right after her section and we will be here ready to go.
My name is Melanie Winter and I'm the head of business development for Elizabeth Sloan, which operates within the Caribbean and West Africa. And we are a business development firm that focuses on growing companies, streamlining companies. We're managing a lot of portfolio companies for investors to get them ready for a series of capital raise. We're also very active in Jamaica Rural Youth Foundation, which is a charitable organization in Jamaica and the US. And we focus on giving opportunities to rural youth through agriculture and economic development activities. And we find it very interesting and needed to create that bridge between the diaspora, the youth in the diaspora and the youth in Jamaica, especially as mentors. So that's one of the reasons why we're so keen on being a part of diaspora forums. Thank you. Today I'll be speaking on the future of work. So the future of work is being molded by several forces. Globalization being one, digitization being one, and then now this radical shift in how we live and work, which is, you know, again pushed by this pandemic and climate change. So what does this mean for professionals? I will be speaking from the lens of a business developer. And what is a business developer? A business developer is really just someone who uses sales, marketing, communication to improve the top line of an organization, ideally where revenue drivers. Now, I'm speaking from that lens. So what is needed for the future of work as a safe marketer, right? There, there. The way we interact with clients or customers are your targets or needs is changing. Just before it was brick and mortar, right? So your customers come to you or you go to them, you know them, you can speak to them, you know what they want. So you can always innovate or get what they want to keep growing your company. Now it's changing because a lot of companies, you see that the larger companies in the world right now are technology companies. So you never see an office, you never see, say, you're not necessarily interacting with persons, but you are online. So the future of work means we need to be able to, one, because of globalization, to be able to communicate right across the world and interact with persons across the world because business is now incorporating everybody globally. And digitization, because we are now reaching persons online, we don't know, we don't know our clients like we used to. Not physically. So we have an idea or an ideal profile of our clients, but we don't necessarily know them physically. So how do we get to know them or make them feel as if we know them as marketers? Some of the skills that we have to, we have to know, or I say upskill for some way of retool or re-skill. But is, you will see a lot of data science or data analytics be necessary now because we're shifting from more, from more of, to more of a quantitative way of doing business. So you're now seeing that we need, all this data is coming to us, right? From, from, from several different advertisements or online advertisements or marketing. Data is coming to us, but a lot of us don't know what to do with it. For this data to actually be relevant, we need to have some data science knowledge to make that useful for us to make decisions, to develop campaigns, to personalize campaigns, to make our customers feel like, hey, we know them, we know what they want. And, and those are some of the things that's changing now. You're seeing where companies are using more digital marketing. So the marketing budget is now being geared towards digital marketing versus traditional marketing. Or more is being allocated to digital marketing versus, versus traditional marketing. So what that says is we are finding more people online. And if the larger companies are tech companies, you know, e-commerce companies, you're finding in the industries, in technology, you have the software companies, which is, we call them SaaS, right? A lot of them are emerging. E-commerce, you have a lot of security companies that are emerging, AI companies, robotics and virtual reality. Gaming is also becoming very big. So what that says is that these industries are getting larger. They are the ones that will be employed. So we will need to align ourselves to ensure that when you're employed, we can be a part of your labor pool, right? So that is how marketers will have to maintain their relevance by upskilling in things like data science program and digital marketing, getting better at design, you know, content, 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 marketing and things like graphics. They have to become better. Even if they can't do it, they need to understand what works and what doesn't work. Now, again, these are some of the things from a standpoint of a marketer. I can speak only from that of a marketer because that's what I do. But from an industry, from, from, from your industry, it may differ. So it is important that you stay abreast of what is happening in your industry and pay attention to who is hiring and the companies that are emerging. Now, some of the industries that are emerging and will continue to grow over the next five to 10 years is again, technology, health and wellness, social intelligence, having to do with, having to do with like social media, media. Education is changing and just like consultant, consulting firms that will help with adaptability and managing these changes seamlessly or the transition of these changes seamlessly will be the companies that are hired. So if they're the companies that are hired, then it is important that you align with what they need. Now, what they're saying, when you do research, you'll see that some of the jobs that will be of great relevance in the next five to 10 years, again, data analyst, ergonomics, which is a big one now, sales and marketing specialist, customer service specialist, management analyst. Again, we are shifting to be in very quantitative because everything has to make sense. But to the bottom line, so you'll see a lot of analysts that is emerging, software developers, computer programmers. Doctors are going anywhere, they'll always be there. But you see product designers, app designers, graphic designers, content developers, especially writers. That will be emerging. Those are the careers that you're going to see having the greater salaries and greater demand. So you have to align with that as a marketer. Now, this is the future of work. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the future of work is actually right now. Because you have seen a great shift between March of this year and now, which is, we're in June. Yeah, we're in June, where we are working from home. This was, this was not even thought of. I mean, my, my mother, she's having Zoom part of her system. So you see that these things are, these things have changed and it's happening very quickly. So the future of work is now, things like we, we, weworkremotely.com, angel.co, let'sworkremotely.com, Fiverr, Upwork. These are some of the websites and the platforms that you can use to find jobs online remotely globally, right? Now, there is a trick, there's a new thing, AI. Now, we all know about AI. Siri, where are you? Siri, play this for me. Alexa, do this for me, right? It does, that's AI and it's not going anywhere. It's getting more, more popular and it is affecting the future of work. So it is affecting how we are recruited. And I, I, I read an article that said, where LinkedIn said 76% of recruiting will be significantly affected by AI, right? Now, how, how, how is AI going to change how people recruit? Now, if I'm saying to you that technology companies are hiring, clearly they need, they need, they need some way to make hiring more efficient. And, 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 and of course, they're using technology. So AI is, is, is assisting these companies with sourcing, discovering and matching the ID, the ideal person for your, for, for, for the job, right? And, and this is not, this is not going to change, right? Now, now, when you're doing, now, when you're doing interviews, you're doing it online and they're now using AI to do facial expression analysis to see if you are the right person. So you cannot escape technology at this time, right? So what you have to do is, you know, don't, don't, don't be afraid of the change. Just try to understand the algorithms that are being used to shortlist resumes. Because if you don't fall in the 85% or more, you're not shortlisting. And this is automatic, it's not personal, it's just, this is the new way, right? So you have to understand the algorithms to, 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 to ensure that your resume falls in that, that 85 and more so that you can get the, the, the next call, right? So there is a website called resumeworded.com. And it, it, it is using AI and I, and I suspect that if it's not the same solution that we may be using a free version where corporate might be using a professional version. I suspect that a lot of these organizations are using very similar tool to streamline or, 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 you know, go through these resumes. So I would advise anyone at this point in time to just go in, upload your, your resume and it will provide guidelines. So you may score poorly in the first round, but it provides the guidelines and you can edit and then score. So you try to aim to over 85. That then puts you in a position to, to, you know, stand a chance to get in a job or an interview, right? So, so now we're, now we're at interviews and interviews are now virtual. It's not much different from being in person. You groom yourself, you make sure you look, you know, presentable for, for the, for the, for the job that you're going for. And, and you ensure that, you know, the calls are coming, need to interrupt your phone call, right? And you ensure that you have stable internet. So it, it, it is just a matter of understanding that we are, you know, it's, it's like, it's like anything else. Every industrial revolution comes and it disrupts what was prior, right? But it also gives opportunity to serve both, both our people or, or communities or customers. And, and oftentimes it gives you the opportunity to be more efficient. So it's not, it's not something to be afraid of. It's just we as people and professionals have to stay abreast of what is going on so that we can be nimble and adaptable, right? I've been seeing a lot of efforts where we quit to get the jobs. And a lot of Jamaicans are already using Fiverr, Upwork, and they're working remotely. A lot of these graphic artists and designers are already working remotely, social media managers, they're already used to this, right? So I think for those particular jobs, it won't be too difficult. I do believe however, that we need to start looking more on business intelligence, big data, manipulating of big data. We need to start using more business intelligence and big data to create campaigns. There's a company called Blue Dot, Blue Dot Finance doing, they are, they are moving in a more, using technology and data to drive market research and we need to see more of that. So we, we are, we're, we're, we're in a space and although we're very adaptable, you know, we're, we're, we're seriously adaptable. I mean, through this pandemic, I saw where one man used to sell fruits, next time I see him selling parvo licks. So we understand that the only constant is, is change. So we just have to be adaptable. Thank you.
All right. That was a great overview of the future of work. Let's now turn it over to Camer and Kadia. What are your thoughts on the future of work and the information that Melanie shared?
With regards to the future of work, I think she touched on quite a few, a good couple of points, especially when it comes to moving remotely, right? A lot of companies now are realizing that, hey, our workforce is able, was, you know, during this time was able to get a lot of the job done while at home. And, you know, realizing that, you know, office space and all of that is overhead for a company. So if, as a company, I can be as effective, you know, provide the value that I, you know, market to my, to my clients as a value, the value proposition of what I'm trying to do. And we can do it while avoiding somebody, you know, maybe downsizing office space, only those who need to be in that space, you know, necessarily use that space. Then your, your money is able to go even further. I think that is where a lot, a lot of companies, you know, they, they, they might believe that, well, if you're working from home, there are a lot of distractions and so on. But for a lot of people working from home is when they're most productive, you realize it. So I, I think that is definitely going to be the, the way we go on, especially in, you know, tech and digital jobs. You know, we now open up a whole scope of opportunity now where, you know, even though I am physically in Jamaica, physically in the US or so on, I can know, you know, some people work full time, not only like on a, on a, you know, on a temporary basis where you get to one, 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 um, one, uh, you know, project to do for a company or so on, you're full time, you're, you're fully employed by a company that is not in the country you're working in. Because we have all these ways to connect, all these ways to, to, to be productive while, while not being physically in that space.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm also glad that she touched on the whole idea of adaptability because I think that is especially important. And she said something about, you know, each industrial revolution brings change. And I'll add to that and say that it's not necessarily an industrial revolution, you know, although you, you can see it that way for practical purposes. But I'd say that we're in a state of technological, technological evolutions. Because really the revolution where it comes to tech happened in the late 1940s. I mean, in, in the late, that's when it all started, when the, you know, internet was already being used as a private network for, for security forces and for those, for those purposes. And then we were looking in the late 1970s when personal computers came onto the market, you know? And it started expanding from there. So in terms of us, we were not there when that evolution took place, when that first, well, that, when that revolution happened, we were not there and, and most countries were not. We were, we had our own problems. And, but then the, the more that happens and the more, I guess, time we have now to turn our attention to, or the more the demand become a thing for us to move into that space, I see where we have been adapting. And the citizenry more so than the government, to be quite honest with you. I think the Jamaican citizenry is way ahead in terms of what they have already been doing in the digital space. And Camer touched on something a while ago about being in Jamaica, living here and not being employed here, but having employment. And on the podcast, I have spoken to a young guy by the name of Javon Davis. He's Jamaican. He studied computer science at UA before, Javon is now living in Canada and he's working with Apple in Canada. But before Javon even left UA, Javon was being recruited by companies like Lyft in the States. Javon eventually got a job with the mother company of WordPress and he was their software engineer there, responsible for their mobile application. In fact, our Jamaican guy, Javon, built out WordPress mobile application that we now use. And in fact, I know several Jamaicans who still work with WordPress. So even before COVID, there were Jamaicans of all age group, it's not just about a youth thing, that were actively seeking opportunities in, in global spaces. And the good thing about being online is that you, going online means you are opening up yourself to opportunities and to new markets that you probably, not probably, you would have never reached before if you were not in this space and afforded that opportunity in this space. So definitely technology, technology is constantly evolving. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's evolving in response to some kind of demand and sometimes it's creating the demand. It evolves and then the demand comes with that. And, and so if we're gonna, in a sense, play catch up, because there's so many opportunities there. If, if we're gonna play catch up, then we definitely, definitely have to be adaptable and we need. I sense there's some hesitation there and, and this was before COVID. There was this hesitation to really integrate, technological integration into business and governance has been so. And there are several reasons for that. But since COVID has happened, a lot of businesses, even government has been forced to know, look at what is the available technology? And then how can we adapt to using the available technology? So we are not stunted or we're not, because the world didn't stop or else it kind of did. But, um, business couldn't stop for long. There had to be ways that we found of doing business as a small economy, we couldn't have afforded to completely shut down. So we had to find ways around the issues that the pandemic created. And I think so many innovations have happened. Camer, I'm going to talk about you now. Because Camer is one of the people who have been innovating since COVID. Camer is responsible for creating an app that searches for people who need testing and, and, and let them know where testing sites are. So Camer has been one of our Jamaicans who are innovating in that space, responding to the pandemic. We have people like Yekini Wallin-Brian from PreLabs, a young guy again from UA. Yekini has teamed up with Lauren Pirt. You, you heard Melanie talk about Blue Dot. Lauren Pirt is the founder of Blue Dot. And they have teamed up and they have been able to produce equipment and things that big technological giant companies, these are things, because you have to go through product development and testing over and it take years. These guys have done it within weeks, literally weeks, 3D printing face mask and, and creating medical equipment using sophisticated 3D printing software. They have just been amazing. They're called the citizens' response JA. And they have been just coming together, working together and innovating. So yes, we are, we are very adaptable people and I find that when Jamaicans get into certain spaces, we tend to really show up and show out in those spaces. So I'm, I'm actually proud of that. And it's unfortunate that it took COVID for us to realize that we really should have been paying attention here. But now that we are having this conversation, I wanted to continue to be something that we are having going forward. Because there is no post-COVID, as far as I know, we haven't found a cure. So there's no post-COVID, this is now the world we live in. So we can't revert to what we were doing before, which is really paper-based businesses and paper-based way of, of, of governing. Even the prime minister has said it, that we need to now move, really move full steam ahead into the tech and digital spaces. So I'm, I'm really happy about that and I'm really glad Melanie touched on those things.
So Kadia, let's move, that was a perfect transition into now so many opportunities. And you touched into how several people have capitalized on those opportunities, both in Jamaica, both here and here as well in the United States. So let's talk a little bit about how do you carve out your own space? There's so much opportunity with digital. You're no longer bound to, you know, a desk. You don't have to have a brick and mortar. So what are your recommendations for that?
You see, I'm, I'm glad that, that, that is where we're going because we have to realize that we're not the only one. First of all, we're late to the digital game, that's one. People have already established full-fledged brands and businesses in this space. We have people like Fashion Nova and who is really, really eating into the retail market share. We call them fast fashion brands. They're eating into retail market share. So we have people who have already been there establishing ourselves. So we're kind of behind in that respect, but, but. And I say that to say that there is competition and the competition is going to be stiffer now because COVID was a global pandemic and worldwide people have lost jobs. Some of us have realized that our bank account not as strong as we thought it was, yeah? And some of us just realized that we probably need to be Um, and some of us just realized that we probably need to be creating um, several different income streams because really one, one means of earning is not going to be sufficient anymore. So we're, we're creating several, so whatever the reason is for you to turn to the digital space, you're not the only one doing it. So my thing is not so much, um, where do I go to find opportunities online? That's good. I, I'm, I'm there, but my thing is more, how can I carve out my own space online? And create a lane for myself and make myself marketable enough for the products or services that I'm selling, marketable enough and so I can actually earn, earn from this. And you do that, um, by showing up and, and before I go there, what I will say is that you are, you can actually do this online, whereas you can't go out tomorrow and establish yourself as governor general of Jamaica or just give yourself a title and shop at somebody's workplace and say, I'm here, I'm ready to work. You can literally go online, give yourself a title and start building a brand or a business around whatever it is you call yourself. So I call myself a digital strategist and a content developer. That wasn't a thing 10 years ago. Or even five years ago, really, that wasn't a thing. So because of the digital space, you have new and emerging fields. A lot of these new fancy sounding titles is we give ourselves. Right? We're taking traditional roles and we're now moving them into the digital space. And then we rename the man give us a fantastic title, so it's all like, we know what I do, it's all important, right? But it's really the same kind of thing that strategists and analysts and marketers were doing before. Is now that because you're in a digital space, you have more tools and resources. You don't have to work for a big company with a big marketing budget to be able to brand yourself. So developing your own digital identity is something that you can, you are afforded in the online space. Building out your personal brand, um, putting yourself out there as somebody with something of value to offer and then getting paid for doing that. It's, it's, it's brilliant, right? Um, and the first thing I would say you need to pay attention to is that is the actual building out part, building out that digital identity. And what we can no longer do is separate, but I hear people talk about reality versus digital. It's one and the same thing. There's no digital versus reality, it's all reality. Because your digital identity is now a part of who you are permanently. You will see that if you're waiting for a job, your employer will now go online and look at your social media platforms to see what you're talking about, what, what are you sharing? What are you responding to? What are you saying? Because now that, um, give them an insight as to your character or your personality, they do that. So building out your digital identity and doing that, you have to be careful about what you're saying and how you're positioning yourself in a particular, uh, industry. Because as a digital strategist, I'm positioning myself in the marketing industry, really, right? So how am I positioning myself there? What am I doing any differently? How am I standing out? How am I, uh, doing something that nobody else is doing? And that's kind of why I started this platform because there were gaps. And, and, and that's one of the things that you do, look at the people who are already doing it in space because you don't have to reinvent wheels in the digital space. You literally look at what somebody else is doing and if he's working for them, copy and paste, literally, right? So, but the, the smarter way of doing it, or I, I don't want to say that, in addition to doing that, you find the gaps. What are they not saying? What are people asking for that nobody's responding to? What are they not saying? Where does the need arise? Um, during COVID, you saw a lot of Jamaican companies pivoting. So what were they doing, uh, before? So you had Mail Pack, they were really delivering packages, you know, documents, stuff like that. Now they've gone into partnership with a price smart and they're now doing supermarket runs and deliveries. You have Seven Crave who is now into partnership deal with KFC. Now for years, we've been asking KFC, can you please do home deliveries? Cause you know, KFC is Jamaica national dish. So we've been asking them for years, can you do a home delivery? And they have not. And now since COVID and people can't really go to KFC, suddenly, you know, we have these deals all over the place and people offering, um, bag deals where you buy a bag of things and, and, and you get it for a cheaper price. And so you see that people have been pivoting, people have been changing and people have been doing their, or creating new things. Um, responding and creating new things in a space where in, in fact, the need was probably already there, but nobody was really paying attention because there was no urgency. But now that there's an urgency, you're, you're scanning the market to see, you know, where are the areas that I can insert myself? And then dominate, um, that space. So that's kind of what I want people to be able to do. Build out your digital brand, build out your identity, identify the reasons why you're going online. Because it's not a running platform, you literally have to have a plan or you will get swallowed. There are millions of people on these spaces. And when I say digital, I don't just mean social media, right? Cause several different digital platforms out there. So being able to choose the right platform, um, to be on, identifying the objectives for being online, targeting the people who would need whatever products and services that you're offering, looking at what your competitor is doing and filling in those gaps or literally copy and pasting. Cause how many bread companies are there? There's food enough out there where everybody can eat their food, as Jamaicans, um, would say. And then making sure that you're paying attention to the response and feedback. And if you are a company, you can also carve out your own, um, space, um, online. And you do that differently than how an individual like myself would do. You do that in terms of customer service. No, Jamaica is not necessarily known for their customer service wonderfulness, yes? So, um, you can now use the digital space, especially social media as an extension of your customer service apparatus. And that is what can, um, distinguish you from somebody else in your industry and endear yourself uh, to people in the digital space. So there are several different ways that we can carve. So whether you're carving out something completely new, one wow and different and fantastic, or you're just taking something that is already there, making it better or producing something of more value for people, either way, you're gonna win. Now, there are three categories and analysts have been talking to say, okay, no, people don't necessarily have disposable incomes like that right now and it's gonna take a while for them to recover and get back on their feet. Because a lot of people have to dip in emergency funds, um, because of the COVID pandemic. So if you are offering a product and services, uh, that is, that falls within the category of comfort, convenience or necessity, then you would have had a better, uh, you would have fared better than most other brands and businesses during COVID and will continue to fare better post-COVID. So that's convenience, comfort and necessity. And, and, and we have Versus, Versus, that came up with the online, um, concerts. We go on to a beanie, it was a fantastic night, one of the highest ranking versus, um, parties to date. So you have entered people in the entertainment industry moving now into the online space. Digital did a, um, they did a kind of MTV unplugged kind of thing where they had Jamaican artists coming in and doing a live concert. And there have been several live concerts being put on by Jamaica. Even the government needed to raise funds for the, for the COVID pandemic. So there's the entertainment industry, the education industry went online in Jamaica as well. The retail industry went online. We've been talking about e-commerce for the longest time. In fact, we've been talking about the digital economy for the longest time. Heads of state in the Caribbean, in the Caricom have been talking and talking and talking and talking and talking and talking and still talking. And we've yet to, I, we've yet to put together a framework, there's no legal policy or framework yet that governs digital trade, which is going to be one of the, the things that hold us up. Um, as it stands right now, there are difficulties for us in terms of collecting monies online. Yeah, right? We, we don't have access to, um, and, and it's not that we don't have the software and the technology because right now I can tell you, four people in Jamaica, four app developers in Jamaica who are, who have already created apps that will allow payment processing and merchant accounts online. It's just that our banks are not responding as quickly as, as they are. And I'm just going here to show you that the possibilities out there, I mean, there's no limit online. And that's the good thing, there's no barriers to entry. That's also a good thing, you're opening yourself up to global markets. There's nobody that you can't reach, there's nowhere in the world that you can't read somebody online. It's just that you have to read the room, be able to read the market, see what is needed and then position yourself to give it and you will earn.
So let's pivot now to Camer, bringing you to the conversation a little bit because, and then Kadia keeping you right where you are because the versus is a great example of collaboration. So let's quickly talk about how beneficial it is to have the right collaborations when the opportunity arises to be successful. And then Camer, join in and then we'll pivot to how those collaborations can extend or can be introduced by your networks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm before, before that, I just wanted to make one quick point when it comes to positioning stuff. I think also diversifying your own skill set is going to be key nowadays. Because a lot of companies now, when you, when you can do multiple, multiple things and there are so many resources that are out there to allow you to learn, you know, you know, pick up.
Free resources.
Animation, yeah, exactly, free resources, you know, if it's free, it's for me, basically. So I think, I think that's gonna be key or, or being able to be smart in terms of um, alleviating some of the, the, the work or providing the value that you can now go into a space. Okay, you need to get this done, I'm going to handle, um, figuring out where to get it done. So that, that, because a lot of people just don't have the time to figure out how to get this done. They just want to get a part of it done. So I, I know people who, they don't necessarily have logo design or graphic designing skills, but they are well-versed in terms of, you know, finding, um, people on Fiverr, again, or these freelancers. So they now streamline a whole pipeline where they're, they're, they're offering a service to entities. They don't necessarily have the skill themselves, but what they're saying is, okay, you need to get this done, I can know.
Yeah.
Facilitate where, where to get this done. That is also a way that people are, are being creative in terms of how, what they go about, you know?
And that's collaboration and, and, and that fosters collaboration as well. Um, one of the questions, now that my, now that the digital Jamaica platform is out there and people are beginning to notice, I find that I get a lot of queries and, and the most, almost every day, somebody gonna message me, email me, call me, where can I find, uh, XYZ? And it's usually persons in the digital and tech space because they think I know everybody in that space now, right? So they're always asking me. So what I've started to do is build out a database of Jamaican digital and tech professionals, whether they live locally or they live in a diaspora. We're creating that database because we realize that they, they have skill sets that are needed, not just locally, but regionally and globally. And that is where the collaboration will really come in. I consider myself a collaborator. I don't see myself as a competition for anybody. And it's not because I place myself above competing, but I see myself more as a, somebody who will facilitate. So if me and you can create something that is better than either of us could create individually and earn more money from that thing while providing more value for the consumer of that thing, that makes more sense to me than me, you try to compete with similar products or similar services, um, for the same market share. That makes no sense, right? And even though there are millions of people online, it's about finding the people that your thing will, um, connect with that can relate to what, 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 what it is that you're doing or what it is that you're offering. So, um, and especially for us as, uh, uh, from small island states, I'll say, I think we have, actually, we do have a competitive advantage because we're a lot more flexible. And we can, uh, my brand can, and before I go any further, I'm a proud member of Mind, right? I'm a proud member of Mind and, um, Camer and I have collaborated on several projects, um, already. Even before we got to the Mind stage, we were already collaborating and you see in this space, we're actually building up a community of digital and tech professionals in Jamaica, whether it's brands, personal brands or business or whatever. And we're trying to see how best we can work together on different projects. Whether it is me building out this database, so when somebody call me and say, hey, Kaid, do you know a software developer? Yeah, man, check so on, so on, so on, so on. And I give them the contact, contact information, they've already been vetted, I know what they do, I know what they can do. And it's just, you, you, you literally connect and you get your project done. So whether it's collaborating that way or collaborating to create content. Uh, but this is the one thing though, and this is, I think, where we have the biggest competitive advantage and why we really should collaborate to create something fantastic. Brand Jamaica is a hell of a big brand globally. It's a huge brand, it's very popular. And I think if more of us start taking advantage of that brand, especially in the online space, believe it or not, there was already a demand, um, in terms of people wanting to consume Jamaican content. They want to see beach, they want to see falls, they want to see tours. So there was already a market there, but then the digital space have increased that appetite. So if we can, and, and Ingrid Riley always talking about putting paywalls in front of our content like a Netflix style and selling it, and believe me, the market is there for something like that. So especially as creatives, if we as Jamaican creatives come together and create something, there's Future. I don't know if you've ever heard of Future. It's a, it's, it's a Netflix type of deal and it's created by several Jamaicans, including Damian Miller and Twain Richardson. Um, so they have created this kind of platform where it's, it's all Jamaican content right across the board. Um, entertainment, well, entertain, mostly entertainment, I think, right? So they will play like a jazz and booze festival or some fest or whatever you, you can find it on a platform. So that's, that's an example of creatives coming together to build out something that is great, that everybody who contributes to that thing can earn from and earn in terms of monetarily certainly, but earn in terms of reputation, build, reputation and brand building. And I think that's important. And when, and we can go to Camer, when Camer talk about networking, we're gonna see how collaborating and networking is part and parcel of kind of the, the, the same thing. Cause then you have to network, make sure that the person you're collaborating with, you're aligned in terms of your, your individual brands. Making sure that that person can bring something to the table as well, so you're not carrying all the weight yourself. Um, and making sure that you're building out, um, networks of people who can help you get from a beginner stage to a stage where you're, um, established with a, within an industry. So that's a mentor, just mentor, or whether that's funding or capital or whatever. Um, that's gonna be important in terms of collaborations as well.
Great, great point. Camer, let's pivot over to you. And then once you make your comment, we'll just go right into your networking and talking a little bit about some more of your insights.
Yeah, and I'm, I think when it comes to collaboration, one of the realities is that to bring life to any, any idea, you know, you need capital and wanting collaboration allows you to do now is share some of the expenses when it comes to starting off a particular project or company or whatever it is that you're working on. And it allows you to, to, to react, to, to bring the idea to fruition much faster. And I think one of the big issues a lot of people is that they are always with this mentality that I don't want people to steal my ideas, so I won't share. You know, you keep everything to yourself, you try to take it on yourself and there is no sharing of ideas. When in reality, one, the, 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 the steps to take an idea from, you know, just being an idea to realization is, is, is so grueling and it requires so much energy and effort that you sharing it with somebody, not, not, they can't just take it upon and steal an idea and make it be a thing tomorrow, right? And I think that is what is missing from a lot of, um, a lot of people, a lot of discussion. It's just the willingness to share. Also provides you with new ideas. So when, when I have an idea, I have people that I, I showed and I say, hey, I was thinking this might be cool. And they're like, actually, no, that wouldn't really work the way you think of it because X, Y and Z, because I don't know what I do. You understand? So they can now bring a different perspective, you know, because I'm, I'm there thinking, my idea, the best thing since sliced bread, this will be wicked. And then I share one person, like, well, do you think of this? And then that just, you know, that does give you a whole, you know, maybe give you a new way to, to view your idea and maybe you pivot it to something else or just, you know, okay, that might not be, uh, might not be a thing. So there, there are so many benefits to, to, to collaboration, uh, in addition to what, what Kaido was saying. Where I, I think that is something that is really crucial and missing from how we operate. Cause we have so many talented people and, you know, Kaido, just in, 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 in the space of like 10 minutes, list about six, seven amazing people doing amazing things. But the issue is a lot of people are doing those things in pockets, right? Separate pockets, when they could read, if they came together, they could really do something huge. And that's one of the things, that's one of the things that went into, when I was creating Mind Jamaica is the idea that, okay, how can we create that space? Now we have all these people with varied, um, forms of skills that can come together and, and, and just network and be, be, um, and share ideas.
So let's talk a little bit about, um, Minds of Jamaica and how it relates to networking. And then just networking in general, what is the power of networking? And what are some of the things you think that people consider networking that aren't really networking?
Yeah, yeah. And, um, so Minds of Jamaica really at its core is a mentorship platform. And I think mentorship and networking go hand, hand in hand. And one thing we're seeing is that a lot of people, one, don't know to operate in a space where they're, they're engaging with people they're not already familiar with, right? How, how do I, how do I, you know, build those interpersonal skills? And a lot of people just don't have access to, to, to a, a variety of people in, in different, um, in different areas or skill sets so that they can, they can, um, they can absorb a lot of information and that knowledge transfer is key in terms of making decisions, in terms of identifying how you want to, to strategically plan out your career, your life, right? So one, that's one of the things we want to create Mind Jamaica is a, let's create a space now where wherever you are, using the digital space, taking advantage of the internet now. We can democratize access to knowledge, right? We, we think scalable mentorship and equitable access to knowledge. We we think scalable mentorship and equitable access to knowledge are two very important things that will allow you to be successful, right? And um I know that in my kind of career journey, networking has played a huge role. And I know when I was younger, I really didn't understand the concept of networking. To me, networking, you know, you you meet people and, you know, somehow that. That's that's that comes as networking. And networking is not just, you know, me, me talking to you to get something or to. To 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 get specific information. It's about establishing a relationship. And what that does now is because you don't know what you don't know, you increase in, you know, the 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 um. The amount of people in your network, the amount of skills and the amount of experiences in your network. That's, that allows them now to put things on your radar that you didn't know exists for you, you know, opportunities that are out there that you didn't know existed for you. And that's what we're trying to do with um, with Minds of Jamaica, because in in reality. Your network, you know, people always say this cliched things, your network determines your network and and all that, but what it does, it it just diversify. You know, what you think is possible for yourself, like you know, you're talking to somebody and here's somebody who have done it, you see them do it and you're engaged with them and talking with them about. How do I get to where I need to be? And I think that is one of the huge, huge values of um, of of a net, of a network, right? And I think in Jamaica, we 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 use the terminology like links. So I have a link here, I have a link there and so on. And I tell people all the time, link is not networking and networking is something that can really set a foundation and propel you during your career. Versus links, links of like skip line attacks, or get the KFC ad earlier than, you know, everybody else in line. That's. That's what links do on it. And we always talk about links in turn, when it, when it's in the context of me getting something from that person. So never links with the graphic design, because me need a logo to 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 be made. When in reality, networking has nothing to do with me planning or thinking about what I'm going to get for that person. I'm seeing that person, I'm seeing their experiences, seeing what they bring to the table, and I find it sincerely interesting and just want to develop. A relationship with that person and I'm going to work to maintain that relationship. So I'm not only going to, you know, message you when I need to use your skills or something. I'm gonna message you and say, hey, I saw this article that, you know, related to what you study or related to what you're doing, check it out, how you're doing and so on. And what that does is, when you build that investment and that relationship, that person now gets so invested in your success that they're going to. Try their best to find opportunities or try their best to help you in whatever, you know, in whatever way they think they can help you. So you don't even have to ask for things now. And that's what's, that's the beauty of a strong network. I think I know for me, there's very few things in in my life that I've done that, you know, was just solely me and my skills and, you know, my ability and knowledge. That made it be possible. Minds of Jamaica would not be possible without my network, because I think when you're launching anything. I think there are a few things I have to align. The idea has to be there. Also, the confidence in yourself that you can, you know, make this thing happen. But also a network. When I launched Minds of Jamaica, I'm not a graphic designer. I'm I'm I'm, I've never really done something where it's like growing an organization. Or or company from the ground up before. Those are, those are are things I don't know about. And I didn't have a ton of capital at my disposal. I'm just hire the best graphic designer, the best business development person and all that kind of stuff. But I had people in my network who have done that. And I reached out to them and say, hey, I'm doing this thing. And because of the relationship that I've already established. They didn't feel any kind of way in terms of lending me their their time to this, in parts of knowledge or giving some advice. It wasn't a situation where this is the first, they're hearing me for two years, I'm gonna need something from them. And that's why, you know, that is how I use my network. As not the case. And that that's something that I think a lot of people really don't understand, or even how to go about networking itself, like the act of networking. I think is 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 definitely a year where people are unsure about, you know, you know, a lot of people, if they step into a networking event and all the people. Especially if you're introverted, you might, you know, you might freeze up and it just seem overwhelming as I see a people. Operate like go up and talk to them and so on. So always tell people like anything, it's a skill that you have to develop. What time, work on it. So I remember, like, I I, when I was younger, I was very shy. A lot of my friends now wouldn't even believe that. Because it's something that I realized that shyness not doing, not going to do anything for me, not gonna work to my advantage, not gonna help me. That's something I have to work and I get to. So when I started college, that was one of the things on my goals is that, okay, let me get over to that Chinese and the um. You know, for some reason, being scared to engage with people in those, in those spaces. And I would, I would, you know, play games when when I know I'm going to a networking event, I would create a game for myself. Where, okay, I need to talk to, you know, I I I can only leave if I talk to two people, because some people, as soon as I get into that space, they want to leave. Right? So now, let's let's create, you know, you can leave when you've you've gotten two emails or two phone numbers or two business cards or something and you're gone. I I work like that and then, you know, maybe in a couple of months, that that is now three, and that is now four. And then after you get that, what do you do with it? You know, for 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 me, I try to create um, like a spreadsheet that just said. You know, name of the person, the contact, where I met them. So that's something I can now visit back in, you know, in a month where I need to follow up or, you know, to maintain. That 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 those lines of communication, because you get discouraged through them all the way, all that kind of stuff. So it is something that you have to be intentional about. And unfortunately, a lot of people, especially when it's something you're not familiar with, you you feel this angst because you don't know if this person cares enough to give me any of their time. Right? So we, you know, Minds of Jamaica, what we really want to do is say, hey, let's let's do, let's let's um. Let's take away at least that part of it. So we're going to present with a group of people that, by the mere fact of them being a part of Minds of Jamaica. We're selective for people who want to give you their time, who want to, right? So you remove that angst. No, 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 you can't just focus on getting the the knowledge, right? They don't have to wonder if these are people who are that type of people, because in reality, some people, them them not go business to 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 give it and time, them knowledge. Or anything like that. And that's just a part of, a part of, right? So I I think that is something that we're trying to. Get get across this culture of networking and through networking, that is where you find your mentors, because there are levels, levels to it. There's so, some people in network, you know, once a month, because, you know, maybe they're also busy, once a month or once every two months, they get that. You make your schedule a follow-up call or you chat with them. But they're going to be people that you find in a network who you and them align so well. That you're communicating fairly regularly and those are people who end up being mentors to you. That it is almost like a graduate from just being a part of the network to somebody who you look to for um advice. So uh um someone, one of my minds, they said their mentors, they call, she calls her mentors her board of directors. So any live decisions she's she's making, she reaches out to them and talk and talk to them. And it's important to have, have those kind of relationships. Relationships with people. So that that is something that I'm, you know, very, very passionate about and very passionate about supporting, you know, students and and young people, getting used to that. Because when I was on, when we were launching Minds of Jamaica, I'll never forget this, because I I came and I was, you know, talking about how. You know, we'll be able to provide a space that you can just reach out to somebody and and learn and maybe eventually they become your mentor and can meet them in person, all that kind of stuff. Because for me, if I traveled, when I was in San Francisco, I went on LinkedIn, I looked up somebody who did, um who was in the genomic sciences like I am. I messaged them and said, hey, I think what you're doing is cool, let's grab coffee, right? That is, that is a way some people go about networking. And I didn't think twice about it, twice about it. But when I mentioned, you know, the possibility of doing that, somebody said, me for me, somebody woman or no, me I want to kill. So you realize there's this base level of mistrust of people, you know, so so and that is something that, you know, while I understand. That uh to some some degree, that assumption, it really holds you back in terms of engaging and learning and getting new ideas. So that is, that is really what we're we're trying to do.
Man, this has been awesome. I think between the two of you and Melanie's introduction, it's been a lot of information. I feel like we could go for another hour, but we have two minutes to wrap up. So I want to give this, give you the opportunity. One, we have a lot of comments saying, great job. Thank you for establishing, talking about relationship. One of the things people have asked, we're talking about networking and collaboration, is what are, what is your contact information? We will definitely share it again as we share the live broadcast later. But if you'll just take a second to just share your contact information and then thirty seconds. What are your closing thoughts that you want people to leave with? And if you have one action you want them to do, what is it?
Um I I can go first. So in terms of contact information, you can, you know, I'm a fan of Instagram, so you can find me on Instagram at Camerick, it's just my full name. You can also, um please follow Minds of Jamaica on Instagram at Minds of Jamaica as well. And you can find me on LinkedIn. Um again, just search my full name, uh Camer is at least decently unique, where you you can just probably type the first name and get me sometimes. But um there's a one action item I want you to to do is evaluate how you 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 handle your network or how you treat people in your network. Is it a situation where you're only reaching out to them when you want something? If you realize that that's something we're doing, be actionable, be be intentional about fixing that and really showing people that, you know, you value them more than just for what they. Can do for you. And for those who don't have a LinkedIn, create a LinkedIn.
Thank you, Camer. Kadia, thirty seconds.
All right, so you can find me at thedigitaljamaica.com or on Instagram at digital dot Jamaica. Um if there's one thing I want persons to do, so many things went to my head. But I want you to actually start taking the digital space seriously. If if that's one ask that I that I have, that would be the ask. It's not a fad, it's not a trend. It it is not something that's gonna go away ever. This is now our way of life. Uh everything has changed, communication has changed, relationships have changed, consumer behavior have changed. How we make decisions have changed because of digital space. So start taking it seriously, find an interest. Um there's an interest group for everything, even Harry Potter. There's a Harry Potter fanbase online, it's ridiculous. So find whatever it is that you're really interested in or something that you want to become involved in and want to be a part of. Find your community online, engage, answer questions, ask questions. And get involved in online conversations, discussions, build your skills and start putting yourself um out there. Um be visible, be more visible, especially if you are a woman in the tech space, oh God. We need more of your, we need more visibility for black women, Jamaican women in the tech space. Start sharing your stories because they're important and they matter.
Yeah. Thank you both so much. This was a great op, great opportunity to share. Thank you for the action. So takeaways. Get broaden your network, start somewhere, right? Make that up, take that opportunity, even if it's uncomfortable. Sometimes it's that discomfort that gets you the furthest in life when it comes to a a key opportunity and a space where you can then enter and be successful. Also, don't be afraid of digital. It is here to say, to stay. And as Katie has stated, be open, be willing. Um and and move forward. And women, as you know, we are very, very smart, very educated. We know this space. Definitely, I would say, speak up, speak out. If you have questions, ask for help. There's nothing wrong with saying, I don't know. That's the beautiful thing about tech and entrepreneurship. It's such a changing landscape and so dynamic that there's always gonna be a time you don't know. But somebody does. So reach out, ask. Again, I thank you, Camer. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Melanie, for your insight. Everyone, have a good night.